At six o'clock, we will follow the January fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Full City Community and School District Number One Board of Education into order. One, if we have a roll call, please.
Robert Bianca, Mary Gill, Sean Hamilton, Clint Harmon, Chuck Lander, Steve Rogers, and Miller.
Start with a pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the following, which stands qualification under the end of this ball with the procedure of. Okay, welcome everybody here and those that are watching us on the internet this evening. Got a couple of very important guests here, so Mr. Spencer, I'll turn it over to you for some introductions, please.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. As Mr. Hamilton said, we do have some guests with us. We're very fortunate to have two of our most recent National Board certified teachers. Who also have their master teacher designation on their Illinois professional educator license. As far as where it's like very grueling and but rewarding process. I cannot been through it, but from my conversations with quite a few of them, it is. But it's something that benefits not only our teachers, it benefits our students and very powerful for them as well. I did ask Mrs. Cam Vega to join us to guide these teachers through the process and has for a number of years now. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to her, but I would like to congratulate Mrs. Ren and Mr. Egan, and then I know Mrs. Vega's been talking about it too.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Retirement is nice, but I do I do miss parts of this. I appreciate being still involved with National Board teachers. Because it does keep me abreast of what's going on and in the district still without being totally out. So this is my fifth year in a row that I'm bringing you some National Board certified teachers, which I think is phenomenal, especially through after what we've been through in the last couple of years with the pandemic and all. It is a rigorous performance based assessment reviewed by peers, which demands evidence to prove the impact that their teaching practice has on student learning and achievement. National Board adjusted their deadlines and offered candidates deferrals to enable candidates to finish the process without lowering the expectations of accomplished teaching. That really helped out a couple of our candidates that were going through the process because they took advantage of those extended deadlines and of the deferral process. So tonight, since this is my fifth year in a row, I decided that since National Board teachers are now being reported on our state report card or our school report card from the state that I would use their language tonight, so it sounds a little bit different than what I say every year. So when we get to this point of looking at our teachers, the demographics of our teachers down in the corner, you can see there's seven teachers, National Board certified teachers. So it looks like this, but I'm going to blow this up because I know nobody can see that. So at the beginning, it talks about who are they? National Board teachers are teachers who have achieved National Board certification, the most respected professional certification available in education. Certification was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. It provides numerous benefits to teachers, students, and schools. Then in the next paragraph, it talks about how many National Board teachers there are in the United States. So there are under twenty thousand of the over four million public school teachers across the country have achieved certification. That's less than half of one percent of the population of public school teachers. In our district, we have seven out of a hundred and thirty-eight, and I hope I did the math correct, Mr. Smith, but that's five percent. So we are way ahead of the nation average for having National Board teachers in our district, which I think that is commendable. Right now, we have the seven, and I believe I should probably spread out there, and Devin Asparza, which would have been on there from last year because she came last year to our board meeting and and unfortunately, we lost her to another neighboring district, but the two in blue are our new ones. We'll talk about them in a little bit. The ones underneath are the other ones that are currently certified and in our district. We have two new, brand new candidates, Megan Van Dine and Matthew Perry, who are just beginning in the process. We have Belinda Egan, who completed the process through a deferral and extended deadline. And she fell short, just short of achieving certification. So we've already talked and she's already got a plan on how to retake one of the components to hopefully boost her points up and gain that certification. We also have had talks with Mr. Spencer because you can see Michelle Painter achieved in two thousand and eighteen. The certification is good for five years, so now we are just hitting our candidates that are going to have to do what we call maintenance of certification, which is another component, not the original four, a different one that that shows how they use what they learned in the National Board process throughout their past four or five years. So we're in we're in discussions now of how to entice these candidates once they have their certification to keep it. We do have some of the best language that I've seen in the state of Illinois for for National Board teachers because we award the teachers not just for certifying, but for going through the process, which the process is the most beneficial part because that becomes embedded in your teaching and in your in your teaching practice. So let's see, I'm going to go on. Oh, and so in this is still on the report card. What do teachers do to obtain National Board certification? I kind of put the components out to the side. There's four components. The first one, they have to complete a test that evaluates their knowledge of subject and teaching approaches in that subject. That test is about a three hour test with three thirty minute extended responses and a forty-five minute selected response part. And component two, they have to submit a portfolio of their students' work and describe how it demonstrates their abilities as a teacher to differentiate for different children. And I think what's really nice about this is it's not just a one snapshot deal, it's a collected work samples over a period of time and how you design instruction to meet the needs of students. And component three, they have to submit two videos and analyze those videos and articulate what's going on and analyze what's happening and their quality of interactions with students and also their learning environment. So there's two videos in that one, and then in component four, they submit materials that demonstrate that they are a reflective and effective teacher by showing how they apply the knowledge of their students and understanding of assessments and curricular modifications to impact their students' learning. This is the one that goes hand in hand with our student growth and our evaluation and our curriculum when we do our data reviews. It that's what the and we believe in that. So when National Board teachers approach data reflection, it works well. And then in that component, they also prove how they're growing as an educator through professional development stemming out of a student need and out of their own professional need. So we have two newly certified National Board teachers tonight. Marty Egan is an exceptional needs, which both of our candidates are in the same area tonight, which is unique. We were fortunate to have that because they worked so closely together, and even though Marty and Belinda deferred, they were still all in the same area, so it did work well. Their exceptional names covers ages three through twenty-one in all the different exceptional needs categories. So when their assessment center, then when they went to prove they had content knowledge about their their certification, it was intense. But Marty started the the year the year we went home. So he was able to get his videotaping done before we were sent home in March of two thousand and twenty, and he used the extended deadline of June to complete his written commentary. When all the testing centers were closed and he was unable to go to a testing center to take his component one, they reopened in the fall and he was able to take it in October. At that point, he decided to defer that year and just wait for his scores and see how things panned out. Well, he received his scores and he did very well for all the work that he put in, and he came back the following year and completed his certification. So I'm going to ask Marty to say a few words about the National Board process for him.
I guess first and foremost, thank you, Pam. You know, she did an exceptional job of teaching. I don't know what that title is, but an exceptional job of leading us through the program, helping us all feel more comfortable and ultimately getting us over the finish line when I wasn't so sure we would. So thank you, Pam. I think the program is very beneficial and something that every teacher should seriously consider doing. You know, as a football coach, one of the things we harp on the kids is watch the film, figure out your mistakes and learn from it, and this program actually forced us to do exactly that. Record yourself teaching, look at it, break down, what did you do well? What can you improve on? How does this benefit the kids? And you know, component four makes you tackle a professional need. I think it's really important for whatever you're doing in life to constantly reevaluate what you're doing well, what you need to improve on and make adjustments necessary. So I'm really grateful to Pam, grateful to the program, and I think I'm a better teacher for having gone through this. So thank you.
And then our second candidate tonight, the research certification is Amy Ren. Amy started the process with her co-teacher Devin Asparza. During that year, we had so many COVID restrictions in place. Since she was also due with her third child in March, she was very diligent and determined to get her assessments collected for component four and her work samples for component two before she went on maternity leave. So she spent a lot of maternity leave with baby in one hand and computer in the other, writing her written commentaries for that. She came back in two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two and finished strong with her videotaping component and her assessment center. And she was very helpful to Belinda and Marty, who they were doing the component that she had done before. So it really is a great discussion group, whether you have everybody in the same certificate area or not. We really learn a lot from each other. So Amy, would you like to say a few things?
I also would like to thank Pam for her mentorship. I definitely would not have finished. I don't know what compelled me to start in the middle of a pandemic and knowing that I was going on maternity leave, but if not now, or if not then, then I don't know that I would have. So I'm grateful that I did. I'm grateful for Pam. As she mentioned, I went through it with Devin Asparza, who was also extremely helpful. She had one year under her belt and we were able to do a lot of things together but separate because I was a special ed teacher in the room, so I was working on something completely different, but a lot of our needs went together and it really, I feel like, helped me to just dive into my practice and make sure that, you know, what I was doing was what was best for kids, what was best for everybody in the room from an inclusion standpoint, from a special ed standpoint, and now that I've switched back to gen ed, I feel like it has helped me to kind of just understand everything more more completely because I've analyzed myself so in depth, I guess. So I'm so grateful that I went through the process. I'm so grateful that I certified. It is a rigorous process. It's a long process. I spent a lot of sleepless nights writing and revising and doing all the things, but yeah, I feel like this helped my practice a ton and I'm grateful I don't have to do any more for five more. I will cross that bridge when I get there.
Yeah, and I think I appreciate their kind words, but they were the ones that stepped up. They were the ones that put their teaching practice out there to be analyzed and look for improvement. So I think it speaks volumes, even through the pandemic, through the girls, through the the extended deadlines, and and they both came out intact. So I think they deserve a big round of applause. And I would like to thank the board for their continued support of the process.
So just real quick, you know, without the board's support, I don't know where we were and without Pam too, I think it goes hand in hand there. So definitely thank you to both, sport and Pam, as you said, because you know, the numbers right there are unbelievable. You show the percentage of that, I was definitely waiting to figure that out there. So I mean, to see how many how many teachers we have, and she said now part of our some of the designation in our score report card, that is our super score report card. This is one more thing to put on our site for us and to go through the process and through some very tough times. I mean, and and kudos to both of them because they're also special ed teachers and they've got some extra responsibilities sometimes that that make it a little more difficult. So hats off to you guys. Congratulations and thank you Pam for that. We do have some name placers for them that are on board. Once we get those, we'll get those two guys a little congratulatory outside and we'll brag tag if you want to from there. So but thank you guys again. Congratulations.
Yeah, so on behalf of the board, Marty and Amy, congrats. Yeah, talk about a difficult time to do any type of internal reflection process, right? I mean, pandemic starts, let alone, you know, the third child and that kind of stuff. So it takes a lot of dedication and it also demonstrates your willingness to invest in yourself, which at the end, invest in our kids and invest in our district. And on the board's perspective, we take great pride in the fact that in the area, we have more than actually more certified teachers than anybody's. Matter of fact, I don't think even anybody in the county touches us when it comes to National Board cert. So you guys should pat yourselves on the back, wear the have the name placard outside your room with pride because that lets people know that they're running a classroom of a National Board certified teacher. Pam, we continually thank you for your help and facilitation and continuing to keep some of our teachers through the process and help encourage some of your coworkers. Again, it's if you can do it during the pandemic and have a kid, right, obviously doing it as well and right, we're we're coaching sports, we're as you know, that kind of stuff as well. So again, half the board wants to thank you and congratulate you and keep up the good work. Thank you. Thank you. You guys are all, you're welcome to stay if you'd like, but this will be your time. If you want to hold, this will be the time. Yeah, we did receive it. Thank you, Mary.
Yes, we did. We received a thank you note from Chief Chris Farstein, to Mr. Spencer and the Board of Education. Thank you for the ballistic rifle shields that the school had bought for the officers that are on our schools during the day, and they said this is going to help immensely. We have to pass the note down so everyone can read it. I could read through it, but I think it's better if you just look at it. And I think that's a good thing, and I'm glad we're able to do stuff with that to help out people in the room, for the nature of kids or seniors.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Okay, is there any communication to the floor regarding agenda items or anything in general? Okay, hearing none, then we'll move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that the board would like removed from consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, then I'll entertain a first and second motion to approve the consent agenda, including the minutes and close session minutes from the regular meeting of December seventh, the November activity funds report, November treasures report, the December monthly manual checks report, the December payrolls, the January accounts payable, personnel items, including approval of employments and extracurricular assignments. First and second motion, please. Bob, so moves and Quinn seconds. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Val.
Robert Bianca, Clint Harmon, Mary Gill, Sean Hamilton.
Yes, yes. Okay, next in our packet, we have our building level administrator reports. Does anybody on the board have any questions on any of the administrative reports? Okay, then seeing none, we'll move on to, I believe it's letter F. Right there on second, which is our special populations report. Luke?
I don't have anything to add, but be happy to answer anybody.
Any questions for Luke from anybody? Okay. Sticking together, curriculum report, Tanny.
Just like to highlight today was the Teacher Institute Day, and Mrs. Kenny had her first opportunity to plan and coordinate a full day Teacher Institute. She did a fabulous job. I'm so very proud of her and all of her hard work and all the building administrators and level administrators that did sessions today and offered up their services to to teach our teachers. So it was a it was a great day.
That was the last one. That's right. Any questions for Tanny or anything?
Okay, Mr. Spencer, your superintendent's report. Yeah, on there, there's not really anything, but I did want to just talk briefly about a couple of things. The high school opening, as you know, is coming to a close, and that that closes on Friday at the end of the business on Friday. So we we currently have ten candidates that are that have shown interest in the position. So we're once we get to Friday, we'll get that a little bit closer, probably early next week, and determine what we're who we're going to bring in for interviews. Maybe do that the next week or two. So I just want to give the board an update on that. Any questions on that on that? The next thing is the GE Hitachi Morris operations. Again, I said something out to the board a couple of weeks ago, but I wanted to just read or review that real quick with you. The update on the GE Hitachi Morris operations spent fuel plant board review hearing happened just before winter break. Mr. President Miller and I attended that hearing and about our assessment complaint, and we're waiting for that to come after the new year, after they heard everything. They said they would let us know after New Year. I'm hoping we have it before today, but we don't. So once I get that, I'll definitely let the the board know. Our taxing districts legal team presented their case for about thirty minutes. Counsel for the GE Hitachi did, just like last year, really didn't say a whole lot, didn't provide any evidence for or against. Just insisted and said that we didn't have any new information for them at the board review, and the board review should just keep the same numbers of what they had, which is around six point one million. Definitely not true. Our legal counsel presented that we have another contract, two of the five contracts of the five nuclear power plants spent fuel there, so they did handle that. Deb Ricky, the counter assessor, did speak and let everybody know that she used the cost approach and not the income approach to determine the E A V at six point one million. Our our legal counsel did cover that and said this wasn't the correct way to do it, as across the street, we have Dresden, and it's it's not done that way. So definitely made that that argument with with them. You know, after closing arguments, we did have a couple of board, actually, one of the board members or review members did ask some questions, which is very promising to try to get some more information. So we're glad to hear that. As I said, I'm hoping to have some some news here in the next week or so, and as soon as I get that, I will send send an email to them. Be glad to answer any questions if you have any on it.
Any questions from anybody? And again, thanks to President Miller, who attended that with Mr. Spencer. So we'll send her. Thank you there. Okay, grant your vocational study report, Chuck. Anything to add? No, anybody have any questions for Chuck or Mr. Spencer? Okay, there's the athletic director report there from Mr. Hutchings, which shows some listed dates and some activities that teams participate in. Maybe he's had a question there. Again, hearing none, are there any additional communications from the floor in regard to agenda items or anything in general? Hearing none, we'll move on to old business. We have letter A, discussion item on the fiscal year twenty-four school calendar. So, Mr. Spencer?
Yeah, just a quick update on that. We met with the calendar committee. We have a group of committee members that represent each building. And on December fifteenth, we had some good conversations, really a lot of time was spent on parent teacher conferences, just trying to figure out what's the best way to to help with our parents, our guardians and our staff and to do that. You know, it's a very difficult time because what our very difficult situation because what might work for the younger levels isn't such a great time for maybe the middle school and high school. So we have to have a little bit of a compromise, and we're still working on that. We're actually meeting again January eleventh. And I feel like we're getting close to where we can put together a calendar, bring the board for approval. We've also been working with G A B C on that because they a lot of our calendars, remember, does derive from what they do because we need to get along very similar schedules. So just what I said, just want to keep the board updated on where we're at with that, but I feel like they're going really well. We've had some really good conversations to this point.
All good. Any questions, Mr. Spencer, on the calendar? Okay, letter B, we have our second reading on our revised district policies. First reading was at the December seventh board meeting, so policy committee will be meeting before the final reading, I'm guessing, right? Or do you matter, right?
We actually made it last week, yes.
Good. So if anyone's got any questions, let the us or the committee know, and then we'll do our final reading at the next board meeting.
Yeah, I do appreciate Bob and Steve coming in on the holiday time to come meet with me in the morning for that.
And I think I remember Mr. Spencer or Bob telling me, I'm looking at the longest list of it's I got three pages here, longest list of policies that you've all ever had to review. So Bob, it's a great opportunity to kind of wrap up your board service, right? The longest policy committee you had. So thank you. So okay, letter C, we have a just update discussion on our twenty and twenty-three facilities improvement plan. So you'll remember at the December board meeting, the architects were present and did a presentation to us on the facilities improvement plan for the buildings. So, Mr. Spencer, you have an update for that process for?
I do, yeah. And if you remember, those ideas that they brought were came from our our focus groups that we went around to each building and talked to, and we told them to think pie in the sky, open it up, and your dream world, what it would be. And that's why you saw some things that you did. We are going to take some of this stuff back to our focus groups. We're not going to do that before break, but we do have a date set up of January thirteenth next week that we'll be having Courtney and Clark come and visit those focus groups again. And from there, then we hope to have something for the board at study session, kind of go over and in January and move on from there and try to make some decisions if the board if the board force would like to.
Okay.
But that, yeah, that'd be coming.
Got it. Yeah. So I think at the December meeting, I thought was maybe those focus groups could be before the holidays. So just so everybody that that didn't happen. So they'll meet in a couple of weeks, then we'll have an updated study session. So any questions, comments, or anything on anything from there? Okay, let's move on then to new business. Letter A, we have discussion action on membership to Three Rivers Education Partnership, commonly known as TREES. Certain taken third and second motion to approve being a membership in the Three Rivers Educational Partnership for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three in the amount of six hundred and fifty dollars. Chuck, so moves. Bob, seconds. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Val.
Chuck Lander, Robert Bianca, Mary Gill, yes, Clint Harmon, Sean.
Yes. Discussion action on the appointment of our FOIA officer. Entertaining first and second motion to appoint Jason Smith as the Freedom of Information Act Officer and Open Meetings Act Officer for the Colsey Community and School District Number One for calendar year two thousand and twenty-three. Also moves. Quinn seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Discussion, comments, roll call, Val, please.
Robert Bianca, Clint Harmon, Mary Gill, Chuck Lander.
Yes. Yes. We have a discussion item on the seniority ranking for certified educational support staff. So this is this is given to everybody just informational. Doesn't take any board action to approve that, but if there's any questions from anybody on the list, you can ask now. Okay. Letter D, we had a school safety meeting before the break Monday, December twelfth. Mr. Spencer, going to give an update on that meeting, please.
Yeah. So if you remember, one of the strategic plan goals was to to reconvene the the school safety meeting, and we were able to do that on December twelfth. I invited over thirty people to join us for a school safety advisory meeting. Included administration of the district, board members, the invited emergency personnel, school resource officers, teachers, paraprofessionals, secretaries, and parents. So we tried to get a wide range of people. We had nineteen people that were able to make it to the meeting that evening. And we reviewed what the current conditions were and procedures that are used throughout the district. It had been a while since we got together because of the last couple of years. We also went through the district's school safety action plan that was created back, I believe, as early to two thousand and nineteen. And at that, then, you know, we kind of went through that to see where what goals we had met, which really we covered all. Um, and at that, uh then, you know, we kind of went through that to see where what goals we had met, which really we covered every goal on there. Um, there's a couple of them that we're still still in the process of doing, but most of them have been met. Um, soon after that, we went through and uh asked attendees if they had any concerns. Um, I really wanted to ask the 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 teachers, the faculty members, staff members and the parents. Um, we had some that were also staff members or also parents, but we had some who were just parents that gave and asked them if there's anything that they they saw that maybe the district needed to work on um from a different view than than us that are, you know, see it every day. Um, and really, there wasn't a whole lot that came up, but I did like there were some some things that come up, um some concern about maybe a lot uh how to alert gymnasiums when there's a lockdown. It doesn't get loud in the gymnasium. How do we do that? Maybe it's a flashing light. So we're going to look at some options, what we can do there probably. Um, there were some that were covered windows um in our classrooms on the inside. We've got, there's a there's a minimum that has to be open. It's a ten by ten uh opening, so a hundred or a thousand square inches. Um if there's some doors that are open, can we have alarm set, alarms set and just, you know, those type of things. Uh please presence at other schools. We did talk to our SROs, and they're going to try to do a better job of getting to the lower levels. Um, you'd recall, we have a pre-K through eight SRO and a high school SRO. Now, they don't have to just be at those buildings. They kind of have to split this. So we did ask our pre-K through eight SRO to try to visit some of the buildings a little bit more. Um, staff signing out the buildings. We're working on maybe a Google form to make that all in one spot rather than just there's a paper sign here if you would, in and out. Um, but we're also trying to do a better job of when we go to building signing and out. Uh, I'm working on it myself. Not the greatest at it yet, it's get old habits to die hard, but uh it's important that we know this is a building for safety issues. Um, and then our Knox box, we needed to update our keys in the middle school, which will be happening here soon. Um, just a quick update, the middle school did get rekeyed over break. So um the Knox box for the the for the fire department and that um will be updated here shortly. We'll get the key for that. So but overall, it was um a very good meeting. I appreciate the people that came both back, the staff, parents, um and so on. So uh, but a good meeting. Um, and I feel like we're in a good spot. And as I explained to them, we when we when the board had this happen back when I said two thousand nineteen, as we we was a safety plan, I mean, spent quite a bit of money to make our school safe safer, safer, excuse me, safer. Um, that really put us in a really good spot. A lot of stuff that we hear at here at webinars is stuff that we're so we're but we still need to address some of the things as we go. So we're very happy with how we're
Good. Great. Any questions from Mr. Spencer from the safety committee meeting? Okay, uh, letter E, then we have discussion action on a donation from the Touchdown Club. So I entertain a first and second motion to approve the donation from the Touchdown Club in the amount of seven thousand fifty dollars and twenty-four cents for the purchase of new alternate jerseys for the football team. Mary so moves. Do I have a second? Chuck seconds. Thank you, Chuck. Uh, discussion.
Questions for Varus, the opposite, right?
Yeah, if you ever recall that Varus in the past has had the yellow jerseys, um those are kind of out of the vice list is purchasing new ones that they're that that stay, but the kids don't get to keep them, they stay with their with the program.
Any questions? No, the Touchdown Club has been a tremendous part of our process for a lot of years, so we always appreciate the work that they do and and their donations. So um, no other questions then? Uh, roll call, Alana, please.
Mary Gill, yes. Chuck Leonard.
Yeah.
Robert Bianca.
Yeah.
Harmon.
Yes.
Robbie.
Yes. We have a discussion on the twenty twenty-four prom tickets. Actually, it should be twenty twenty-three, I believe, right?
Uh, well, it's twelve twenty twenty-four or twenty-three, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry to say, yeah, it's certainly twenty twenty-three prom. And to say we're not talking about prom for a year and a half from now. Anyway.
That's my
Talking about upcoming prom.
Mr. Spencer?
Yeah, all thanks for that. That's me. Um, if you remember the fall, I kind of talked about how the prices have really shot up for the the prom committee. Uh, prom sponsors Allison Peterson and Mary Kay Saye have worked really hard to try to find the most affordable price they can for for their students. Um, the venue increased around six thousand dollars, the same anywhere I go for, but it's such a sign of the times right now. Um, I can tell you from having a wedding this past year, they're high. Um, but also the cost of buses increased. If you remember, we usually have in the past taken charter buses to and from um prom and then to uh and then back to the school. So um charter bus buses would have moved bumping tickets up to a hundred and seventy dollars. Um, they looked around and decided to go with the old school buses. Um, they're going over the worst, it's not not too far. Um, it's not as elegant as the car to us, but it's uh fifty dollars cheaper, so a hundred and twenty dollars is what the prom tickets tickets will cost. Um, just to give you an idea, last year, the projects were around eighty dollars. Um, so just to this inflation where we're at these days, unfortunately, that's a passive impact that that cost is being passed on. Students did have the opportunity to sell highs again this year, which would have reduced their ticket sum and also helped out. Um so they they didn't have that opportunity. But that's where I was at. Be glad to entertain any questions.
Any questions? Sign of the times, unfortunately. So any questions on upcoming prom? Okay, open item, not known agenda prep, anything from board administration? Any communication from the board regarding any agenda items or anything in general? Okay, then at six thirty-two, I'll entertain a first and second motion to go into slow session for the purpose of considering information regarding the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, uh administrative contracts and collective bargaining matters. Chuck so moves and Quinn seconds. And then roll call, please, Alana.
Chuck Leonard.
Yes.
Quinn Harmon.
Yes.
Robert Bianca. Mary Gill. Sean.
Yes.
Hi, Anne.